Labor negotiators, city designated representatives Christine Donnelly, Dean Albro, Gable Garcia, Colin Tanner, and Jeff Malave. Employee organization is International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 1245. Seeing no one call in and just ghost phone sounds. We'll go ahead and close oral communications and we will reconvene for open session at 6:30 PM. We will now reconvene the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jeremy Ball.
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here.
Mr. Malave, a reportable action from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met tonight in closed session to discuss the labor negotiation item on the agenda. Council had a discussion and gave direction to staff, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. For those of you listening at home, you can listen on K-Pag 100.9 or via live stream on the city website or internet radio also from thecityoflompoc.com. Links are on that page. If you would like to participate from home tonight during public comment, you may call in at 805-875-8201. And as always, you're able to submit your comments via email to the city clerk no later than 4:00 PM on Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. Pastor Joy Price, please come forward. Join me in invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Let us pray. Holy One, we are afraid. We fear our neighbors and even our friends. We fear the violence that is gripping our community and our nation. Be with us in this time of trial. Protect our children and us from those who would seek to harm us. You who are love, fill us with your goodness and your peace. Let us learn new ways of working together rather than resorting to cruelty. Show us your right, your path to right living. Demonstrate for us how we might be in proper relationship with others. Give us ears to hear and eyes to see what is your example for us. Today, we pray for all of our leaders that they might be inspired by your example in the ways of harmony and justice. Give them hearts for the people that rely upon them and give them wisdom that they might act with mercy. We thank you, Divine One, for all that you have given us and we continue to pray for your guidance. These things we pray in your sacred name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Tonight, we have a proclamation honoring Pride Month. And for those of you that are here, please join me at the podium for the proclamation. Wherever you would like to stand, the more the merrier. Whereas over 50 years ago, June has become a symbolic month in the which the LGBTQI+, the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex community members and supporters come together in a variety of celebrations of pride and social justice. And whereas the city of Lompoc has a diverse LGBTQI+ community that includes people of all ethnicities, religions, and professions, whose leadership is vital to the LGBTQI+ movement. And communities are stronger when all people, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression, or sex characteristics are fully recognized as free and equal members of their society. And whereas many of the residents, students, city employees, and business owners within the city of Lompoc, who contribute to the enrichment of our city, are a part of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning community. And whereas June 28th, 2022, is the 53rd anniversary of the Stonewall riots, during these riots, LGBTQI+ citizens rose up and fought against the discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. Whereas 2022 has been seen, a record number of anti-LGBTQI+ laws and additional bills may be filed before the end of the legislative sessions. This month, the Senate is likely to once again take up the Equality Act, which would extend protections to cover federally funded programs, employment, housing, loan applications, education, and public accommodations. And whereas Pride Month is an opportunity to peacefully protest and raise political awareness of current issues facing the LGBTQI+ community. And whereas the rainbow flag, also known as the pride flag or gay pride flag, has been used since the 1970s as a symbol of pride and recognizing LGBTQI+ social movements. Now therefore, I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby declare the month of June as LGBTQI+ Pride Month in the city of Lompoc and invite everyone to reflect on ways we all can live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding and recognizing Pride Month during the month of June. In witness thereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Lompoc to be affixed the 7th day of June 2022. I want to thank you all for being here. I want to encourage all of you to better understand our friends and family. I have family that are transgender. It was very difficult. They were born and raised in Texas. So it is near and dear to me to recognize those in our community, those in our family, those in our employment, that struggle each day to deal with not only who they are, but to know that we love them. So love comes first and foremost, no matter your background, your gender. I have a few handy basics on gender, the basics from Washington Post, that I will share with my fellow council members and make sure a copy is put on our website with our city agenda. And I will now present this to you all. And if any of you would like to speak on the matter, you're welcome to. Jason, would you like to say a few words? I know you never turn down a microphone.
I'd like to thank the city council of Lompoc, drop my flag, and Mayor Osborne for this proclamation. You know, when I was a queer kid growing up in Lompoc in the 90s, I graduated in 1997, we were still looking behind our backs to see if someone was following us in the daylight, to call us a queer or something worse, to make us feel less than, to make us feel unrecognized and unwelcome, and to look at where we've come to, like to come to a place where at 42 years old, I'm helping receive our proclamation on behalf of a community of people who are still told to be the other and to made feel like unwelcomed at alarmingly common rate. You know, I thought we would be further along from 1997 and 2022. And I just want to thank the straight allies in the community because it's powerful to be out. It's powerful to say like, I demand justice. I demand respect. I demand love. I demand dignity. And to have straight people to allow us the space to be brave and from which to like proclaim like our dignity and like to say, I deserve, I'm deserving of love. And like, I'm queer and I'm proud and I'm here and I'm unashamed and I love me. And like, thank you to the community for allowing me to represent people who are in dire need of respect and love and dignity and protection. So gay pride for me means like love, self-love, and like respect. And like, thank you so much. Like, queers are here and we're fabulous.
Thank you all for being here. City manager report?
Yeah, first I wanted to start out by getting a council approval on something. On July 19th, we have the Planning Commission planned, the joint meeting. If council want to, they could combine it with the special meeting for the Streetscape Multimedia, Multimodal Improvement Plan Workshop. We could start that meeting at 4:30 instead of 5:45 and I'll leave it up to you guys if that's something you entertain.
The city council meeting on?
On the 19th.
On the 19th? Are we all good with that, starting early?
Just a quick question. What is the rush on this? Are we up on a deadline on that street?
Yes, it's a grant-funded effort, so there is a deadline to get that done.
Because when I read through, it just didn't, it didn't list any deadlines in the actual plan.
Correct.
So there is deadlines that have to be met then.
Correct, to expend the funds.
Everyone okay with starting early? July, the next council meeting.
It's July 19th. It's a regular council meeting night, but there's also a scheduled joint meeting with the Planning Commission as of right now. That is scheduled to start at 5:45. The request is to start at 4:30 instead.
Start at 4:30. 4:30. He's not okay with it, but he'll be here. All right. I believe that is a unanimous. We will start at 4:30 on?
All right, thank you.
July 19th.
I had a couple of other things.
Okay.
I would like to congratulate Gabe Melina and David Magagna for receiving the H. Thomas Gore Award for Valor. I also wanted to congratulate David Garza for a Superior Performance Award. I also wanted to thank the Police Department, especially Kevin Martin, for putting together the Food Truck Festival. It's nice to see our community get together and appreciate what the Police Department does for us to keep us safe. Next, I wanted to let you guys know that we submitted Pioneer Park renovation for direct appropriations. And we were lucky enough to get Congressman Carbaugh and Senator Padilla to approve it. It still needs to go through the budget, but it's definitely a big first step for the city to get funding for that renovation. So I was pretty excited. I thought I'd share that with you.
Any questions for City Manager? Councilmember Cordova.
Dean, I have a quick question. The Utilities Commission, I know that they haven't met in a while. And I've been asked, is that, are we still going to be holding commission meetings? Is there a reason why that's not being held and are we looking to bring that back?
I think I'd brief defer that to our utility director.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So as you may recall, meetings were deferred by the council as we worked our way kind of through the pandemic. And it wasn't all that long ago that we did resume some of the normal scheduling. However, due to staffing constraints in the utility department, it's been very difficult to schedule those meetings. It is my intention, however, in the future to pick those back up when staffing levels come back up again.
Okay, should we talk about, and I don't know if it needs to be a council request then to bring that back then for discussion if we don't have a timeline for it?
Yeah, if you wanted to discuss the reasons for why the meetings have not been held or you wanted to direct staff on starting the meetings back up again or discuss that, that would be a council request for an agenda item on that.
All right. Any other questions for the City Manager? All right, seeing none, we will go on to Consent Calendar. If you would like to call in for Consent Calendar, the number to call is 805-875-8201. And the floor is now open. For the public's information, item number one, approval of minutes for April 19th has been pulled. We did not receive those and we'll have that on a future agenda. You have three minutes to speak on this item. While we wait to see if there are any phone calls, I'll read the process for Consent Calendar. All items listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the Consent Calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one rise and seeing no one call in, we'll close public comment on Consent Calendar and I'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Starbuck.
I wouldn't like to pull an item, but I'd like a little clarification on item five. An item five, which is the sole source purchase of open air for the Aquatic Center roof panels. On the first attachment, one of the notes here in the back says that all work will be done by their crew, but additional cost will be incurred if a union crew is required. Is this money, what, where's the contingency on this? Because then I look down, item's not included in this contract. And this is everything from covering a pool to cleaning pools, et cetera, et cetera. What is our contingency on this if we have to pull a union contract voice, non-union, and total cost later, I guess, is what's happening? It doesn't address it anywhere in the staff report and it isn't part of the included funding for it. Maybe I should have pulled it.
They're trying to decide who's going to give us the answer.
Oh. Good evening, council. There is a contingency of the 10% built in to this fee here. They're the original, the designers, so that they're the ones that, that's why we're sole sourcing because they're the ones, the only ones that can come and fix their product. And so we'll be putting the new railing and all the steel structures instead of the plastic. But anything that's going to be, the cleaning the poles or anything that, on that note, would be done just by staff if it's getting ready for the next day. But typically, all this work is going to be done at night. So it won't affect the operation of the Aquatic Center.
Yeah, I just was kind of reading it. It's like all of a sudden, there could be quite a difference between a non-union and a union crew doing the work. And I didn't see a contingency in here. So whatever our 10% contingency is enough money to cover this, so we're not going to come in and have to do a budget readjust on this money that we've already allocated.
Yeah, typically, the, it was a two-man crew that have come in and replaced the other eight panels. So we're anticipating it'll be the same two-man crew from the company that'll come in and do the work.
Okay. I just thought I would want to ask that, so thank you. I'll go ahead and move Consent Calendar.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's vote. That passes 5-0. And there are no staff presentations for this evening. So we'll move on to oral communications. This is for items not currently on our agenda. You have three minutes to speak on city matters. If you would like to call in, the number to call is 805-875-8201. 805-875-8201. And you will have three minutes to speak. Floor is open.
Deb Andrews, Lompoc. The water fountain outside chambers is still broken. It's been out of operation for months. Would appreciate it if you could get that fixed for citizens. Small businesses in Lompoc are harassed with regulations. Many Lompoc small businesses closed permanently due to the COVID restrictions. We are learning many truths that have been hidden from us. According to my sources, most national chains and big corporations are controlled by BlackRock and Vanguard. Poisons are added to our water, food, and personal care products. Walmart is involved in trafficking of all kinds. McDonald's serves human meat. We need to return to small, local businesses within a positive business environment. The Chinese Communist Party did not intend to invade California. Their plan is to colonize California. They own many stores, restaurants, and land for cannabis grows. The Chinese Communist Party prefers our departure. Our late governor Newsom colluded with the Chinese Communist Party to facilitate the takeover of California. Many Lompoc residents and their grown children have left Lompoc due to the deteriorating conditions, lack of jobs, and housing. There's a deep underground military base beneath our feet that has been difficult to destroy due to the diatonaceous rock. There have been many roadblocks to impede the success of Lompoc and its residents. However, the tide is turning as we learn our true history. Our elections have been corrupted for decades. We have cameras to monitor citizens, but the police don't wear body cameras. City employees have flex time, yet there is no time clock to monitor the varied schedules. The restored republic returns power to the people, the original constitution, and common law. The gold on the flag represents the USA Corporation maritime law and should be removed. We will no longer be slaves to that corrupt system.
Eddie, we have a call first. All right, we had, we had some loss. Eddie, you now have the floor.
No technical difficulties here. Mayor, city council, thank you. My name is Eddie Taylor. I am the CEO of the Regional United Way, serving Northern Santa Barbara County. One of the programs that we operate is the AmeriCorps partnership for veterans and people experiencing homelessness. I'm here to address some misinformation that was brought to our attention, probably partially due to COVID, but you know, things change. Many in our communities have been misinformed and are under the impression that the United Way is no longer involved in addressing homelessness through our Home for Good initiative. I'm here to tell you that's not true. When we started Home for Good, we meant what it says in the title of the program. Home for Good, not for a little while, but to get the services that are needed to help people get stable and stay off of the streets. Here are the facts. Our AmeriCorps program, which started six years ago, has grown to 30 full-time equivalent workers distributed throughout the county, working with county departments and nonprofit organizations dedicated to assisting veterans and people experiencing homelessness. In 2018, the United Way accepted the responsibility as the lead agency to work with the county to develop a coordinated entry system. And we organized more than 20 partners in that system. The homeless management information system was populated with usable data for the county to decide how to best approach and assist our unsheltered homeless population. Our responsibilities under that contract ended in August of 2020 and the lead responsibilities were transferred to the county Housing and Community Development Department. In the past two years, during the pandemic, the AmeriCorps workers were responsible either directly or in collaboration with others for housing 535 individuals. They also assisted 75 veterans, housed 30 of those veterans, and we began to focus their work efforts more on housing retention, again, Home for Good. We maintain six AmeriCorps members on staff. A couple of them are here with us tonight at the United Way, working under the Home for Good banner, charged with housing retention and continued outreach in partnership with the Coordinated Entry System. We have applied for a third, three-year contract with the US government to provide the AmeriCorps program and expect its approval yesterday. The financial support that we receive from our donors and grantors helps us sustain the AmeriCorps program workforce, provide the only mobile shower unit operating in North County, which we would love the opportunity to expand to Lompoc. We can continue to have the same results with our partnerships with nonprofits and county departments and the cities that support our work. Therefore, as community leaders and employees in the county or city, excuse me, we're asking you to talk to us first about what we do. Because the first thing we're going to ask you is, how can we help? The second thing we're going to ask is internal. Can we have an impact? And when we can, we do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You could just hit her on speaker from your phone with your microphone.
Go ahead and attempt to speak so I can see if it works.
Hello? I was told to wait one second. Am I live? There's no way of knowing. My video is a minute behind what is real life.
Okay, ma'am, you're live.
Am I live? Do I get to comment?
Comment now. You got three minutes. Clock is going.
Oh, well, this is like my fifth call. I keep getting hung up on and directed to?
Can you hear me, ma'am?
Directed the voice line. Oh, is somebody actually there? Yes.
It is. Are you ready to give your three minutes of public comment?
I am.
All right, let's do it.
Yes, okay. I called in initially when the crazy lady in the red hat was on, saying our prior governor and different things like that. I'm grateful that you're our council, that you place more value on human life than profit. Thanks for protecting our lives, shutting down the economy when it was called for. I still think it's called for, but you let things go because that's what the healthcare officials are recommending and I appreciate your service. Thank you, city council, mayor. Appreciate your service. Bye-bye.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, you may come to the microphone.
Okay, so I'm just going to talk about some of the programs that Eddie highlighted and what it's like on the ground. So hello, Mayor Osborne and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a program coordinator for the AmeriCorps program at United Way of Northern Santa Barbara County. And in Lompoc, we have five AmeriCorps members. And several of them, three of them are here tonight. I'm part of a team that administers the program. We have about 10 agencies, including shelters and county agencies that we partner with. And some of the names that you might be more familiar with are Good Samaritan Shelter, Public Defenders, Probation Department, Housing Authority. And next term, we're going to renew with the Santa Barbara County sheriffs as well. So one of our, one of our members here also is from Youth and Family Services at the YMCA. And our other member is at the Home for Good Agency through United Way of Northern Santa Barbara County. So what do the AmeriCorps members do so effectively that other agencies can't is they fill in the gaps. Many agencies don't have the staff to spend time one-on-one with beneficiaries. So they get them all the documents ready. For instance, they'll go to a social security office with beneficiary. They'll go to the DMV so that they can have an ID. So the members' tasks include housing placement, housing retention, wraparound services, which could include mental health services, and they prevent the beneficiaries from going back out on the street. And I, I think you have in front of you some of our data to just highlight the effectiveness. As our, as our CEO mentioned, we housed in 2020 to 2021 535 houseless individuals, including and 75 veterans. We served 1,977 individuals, providing direct homeless services. And this year, so far, midterm report, we have housed 282 and also 120 veterans. And we've served 282 and also 120 veterans. And we've served two thousand seven hundred and thirty-three individuals. So we understand that Lompoc is concerned with promoting and protecting business interests, and we want to build a collaborative relationship with the business community so that their interests are heard. There seems to be interest on what we are hearing from the community, and we would welcome the chance to sit down with council members and to discuss how best to address homelessness and to collaborate better with the business community. So thank you. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Haley Corral. I am an outreach case manager with Youth and Family Services. Thank you for having me. And I just came on to speak a little bit about my experience outreach in the community. Service and a shoulder to cry on. There is something that drives us to wake up in the morning. For some, it's hope, money, faith, or family. These are common themes that make us who we are, common among people who are housed. Whoever, there is an unspoken theme that lies beneath the foundations of the encampments in the riverbed and goes far beyond the places we lie our heads at night. It is fear. Fear is the drive, fear is driving the populations I serve to fight, flight, fawn, or freeze. They fear they will be robbed, they fear they will be harmed, they fear for their health, for their future, for their family, and for their safety. I say this all because it is true. I had a client, an older woman, who had been unhoused for a very long time. She is sweet and a great storyteller. She loves her sons, she likes fashion, music, and other pretty things. I remember talking to her about eyeshadow and how much she liked the jewel tones on her blue eyes. I went home that night and gathered up some makeup I had bought, but hadn't touched much. I sanitized it and packed it away for her. I rode around on my bike for three days looking for this woman. Come to find, she was caught by police for sleeping in the streets and was rather traumatized as almost everything but the shirt off her back was thrown away or stolen while she was away. I sat with her while she grieved the loss of it. I gave her the makeup and she cried. "It's not a sad thing or a sad cry," she said. "I'm just lucky to see another day. Some people don't even have a cart to carry the weight." Then she lit up a cigarette. In my time doing outreach, I have seen the ugly side of Lompoc. I have also seen the striking beauty of hope that accompanies that ugliness. Please do not allow stigma to prevent change. Unhoused people are a part of our community. They are people too. They deserve the same respect, decency, kindness as the neighbor next door to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dee. I do outreach. I document ready for the beneficiaries. I try to talk them into shelters and also help serve hot meals as well on Mondays at 2:30. They need to eat too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rafaela Moreno. I'm a citizen here in Lompoc for the last five years. I live in 500 East College. I purchased that home for two years so far. I do have a little bit of a request. I have delivered the plans of the motorsports park project with the major secretary on May 17th, hoping that they would be reviewed by all of you and sit down and speak with the experts in the project and the plans so we can, you know, take in consideration of all the people that have those cars, that like to ride fast, drive fast, and put them in a place where they should be for their safety, for the community's safety, for the noise situation. And it is not only going to be for them, it is going to be for bicycles and motors, as you probably reviewed it. And if not, please do, because I'm hoping we can work on that. I did speak with Mr. Jeremy. Nice to meet you. Thank you for responding the first call. I didn't get to get the second call from you. I assumed you were very busy. But I approach you mainly because I have your card since you had that campaign as you were being elected, and I like what you share, you know. Show me what we can do. So I like that, and that is the reason why I mainly approach you, because I believe that when a community come forward and have already developed project, I do believe that we need to sit down and go over it and see what we can do and put all the parts together for the benefit of those young boys that are driving fast and noise, making a lot of noise in the streets. So we cannot ignore the problem. If the situation is there, they're going to be doing it as long as they want, and why not provide them with a place since that project is being already developed? And I understand there's $400,000 already within studies, researches, and the plans being spent already. And the space, I understand there is in the airport area. So there is a lot already ahead. So that is my concern. Hopefully, I get some response on the phone and get, you know, maybe one or two options to sit down and bring the experts to answer your questions. If you do have before, you can consider approving it or putting in the agenda and bringing the community aboard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else rise and no calls, we will close oral communications and bring it back to the agenda. Next agenda, item number nine. I would like to pull this item and postpone it to the next meeting. In reviewing the bylaws, we need to correct them. The intent was to have it state that the business be located inside the city limits and the applicants live in the 93436. Unfortunately, the bylaws don't state that. So I would like to request that we update the bylaws by correcting them to state that the business be located inside the city limits, but that the applicants live within the 93436. Have that come back on the 21st, along with the appointments on the 21st. Councilmember Starbuck.
Just a quick question. I forget how many businesses are supposed to be on this foundation?
Two.
Okay, we've got two listed, and we received an email for two more applications. So we're going to have to make a decision at that point also?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll support your moving it.
Thank you. Do we need a third on that one, since it's a request?
Yes, we need to have a third.
Okay, third.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring that back at the next meeting. And I also wanted to note that for any bylaws amendment, the council has to approve it, but the nonprofit board also has to approve it.
Okay.
So just FYI.
Okay. But can we make the appointments the same night, even though it has to go back to the?
Yes, we'll make them conditioned on the bylaws amendment being adopted.
Okay, great, thank you. Because I don't want to slow that meeting down. Councilmember Starbuck.
You know, not to shut off the people that are applying, but would, at this point, if we're going to alter it, could we have two alternate business people? That way, all four that have expressed interest would be eligible to sit on these board, basically, but only two voting members? Or are we going to wind up making a decision of selecting two of the four?
If you wanted to have a discussion of adding alternate members, come back, then that can come back as well at the next meeting.
Just tossing it out.
Do we want to make that change? Councilmember.
I'm okay with leaving it as is if it's going to drag out, but there's no harm in adding two alternates in the event that, you know, someone falls out. The challenge we're having is getting people to the table in most committees and commissions, so I would be okay with having the discussion as well.
Okay, can we add that to the discussion?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you for that. All right, we will move on to item number 10 for a public hearing. Public hearing to consider the ordering of services and improvements, the continuation of the assessment for fiscal year 2022-23 for the Park Maintenance and City Pool Assessment District, number 2002-01, adoption of the resolution, number 650822, approving the engineer's report confirming the diagram and assessment, and ordering the continuation of assessments for fiscal year 2022 through 2023. And we have our accounting and revenue manager, Matthew Adams, to make that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens, and staff. That was quite a mouthful, wasn't it? This should be pretty quick and simple. This was a three-step process that began back in February in which we directed SCI to start the engineer's report and complete it. We've now gone to, or gone through the preliminary approval of it, and we are now here for the public hearing. So it's based off of the CPI for the city of Los Angeles. And the January CPI was 7.51%. We are capped at 3%, so the additional 4.51% will roll over and be applied in future years. The single-family equivalent for this year is $30.66, based off of the 3% increase from last year's SFE. And the total revenue from this will be $364,506. The park and pool budget for 2223, this is just the budgeted amount, is $10 million, $98,657. We have the minimum requirement of 25% for two and a half million, with the city contribution of $7,227,487. So in summary, we are here to approve the engineer's report officially, confirm the diagram, and then send it to the county to put on the tax roll. Nice, quick, and easy.
Any questions for our staff? Seeing none, oh, Councilmember Starbuck.
When does this sunset?
This one here is, that is a really good question. I do not know.
I think it ends, I think it's 2034. I think it's 2034, but we could double-check that if you wanted to.
2034.
It doesn't sunset, though. It just, the debt pays off. It'll still continue.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, clarity.
It doesn't sunset.
It doesn't sunset, though. You can use this money to fortify our appropriations.
Once the debt's paid off, it'll be applied to other items and.
There'll be less that will have to be paid.
Continue multiplying until whenever, whenever.
The debt service will stop.
Any other questions? All right, council members.
I have one quick question. Just out of curiosity, I read through the numbers really quick, and I love the historical significance of going back and look at inflation in '08 and all those things. So obviously, the inflation hit this year is pretty big, as we all know. And then '08, it was pretty big as well. So knowing that we have that 3% cap, do we just assume that a full 3% is the next one? Is that how it works when we?
Going forward each year. We use up the additional 4.51%. So if, say, next year's inflation is only, just for the sake of numbers, .63, it'll be at 3% because we use up part of that 4.51%. Until that's expended.
I was just curious how that works. Thank you.
Okay, I think we may be done for questions for now. We'll go to public comment, and then if we have any more, we'll have you return. The floor is now open for public comment on this item. If you would like to speak to it, you have three minutes and may come to the podium. You may also call in at 805-875-8201. I'm going to have to if we don't eat up 30 seconds in buffer in order for that number to get out there, because this is one of those exciting topics that everyone wants to call in on, right? All right, seeing no one call in and no one rise, we will close public comment on this item and bring it back to council for questions or a motion. Councilmember Vega? You voted, but you didn't speak. You were so fast.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, in a second.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right, we're now on to unfinished business. And I will also mention that for the next item, also item 12, that Councilmember Cordova is needing to recuse. Is this correct, City Attorney?
Yes, for item number 11, Councilmember Cordova is going to recuse herself because of a potential conflict of interest due to her serving on the Board of Explore Lompoc or Visit Lompoc, Inc. And on item number 12, Councilmember Cordova is going to recuse herself due to conflict of interest because of a business interest that she has that's related to that item.
All righty. We have Matthew back to do the Lompoc Tourism Improvement District 2020 and 2021 Annual Reports by Visit Lompoc, Inc. Take it away.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council, citizens, and staff. I bring back the information that Councilmember Starbuck had requested back in the April 19th City Council meeting. There was the agreement in 2018 that extended through 2028 that superseded anything prior to that, thus nullifying the agreement that was handed to me from 2013 to 2018. Also, in the 2013 agreement was a mention of a loan, which the city has been repaid. It was not in the 2018 agreement. It does not exist. It has already been repaid. The request for a list of subcontractors and consultants, there aren't any this year, so there was none to report on the report. And finally, there was a 1% administration fee that was to be collected per the agreement. We noted that it had not been collected since January 2019. This was an oversight. We have since corrected it and have gone back to VLI and, you know, informed them of the error and have corrected it going forward as well. Have I answered all the questions? You had Councilmember Starbuck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions from any other council members? All right, we will once again now go to public comment. Thank you so very much. If you would like to call, the number to call is 805-875-8201. If you're in the audience and would like to speak on item number 11, you are welcome to come to the microphone, and you will have three minutes. I thought Councilmember Starbuck was going to sing last time. You're not going to sing for us? You're just going to chew? He brought his own snack. He didn't share. Yep. All right, seeing no one call in and no one rise, we will close public comment and bring it back to council. Do I have a motion to accept? Yeah, you're voting again. You're so ready. How about a motion first?
Motion, please, to accept.
Awesome.
I'll second.
Councilmember Ball has seconded. You sure you don't want to wait till you swallow to make a comment? All right, then let's vote. And that passes 4-0, one abstained. All right, item number 12. Adoption of Election Resolution to Place Before City Voters at the November 8th, 2022 General Municipal Election. A 1% special transient occupancy tax measure for police and fire purposes. Call of that election and request for consolidation with the statewide general election. Direction for impartial analysis and ballot arguments for the measure. And we have City Attorney Jeff Malave and City Manager Dean Albro to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. On May 3rd, the council discussed a potential ballot measure item and placing that item on the November 8th, 2022 General Municipal Election. The item that was discussed and that the council directed staff to bring back tonight to consider was a 1% increase in the city's tenant occupancy, transient occupancy tax, which would be a special tax, and that means it's restricted. The funds raised would be restricted for a particular purpose. Council directed us to put together a ballot measure that would restrict the funds 65% for police purposes and 35% for fire purposes for Lompoc Police and Lompoc Fire. The measure that the council directed us to put together also includes a collection credit that the hotel operators would be able to retain, 2% of the TOT that they collect and hold for the city. and hold for the city, um, to cover their costs of collecting that TOT for the city. So the ballot measure, uh, was prepared and is before you tonight as an attachment to the first resolution. There are four resolutions, uh, before the council tonight to, uh, consider for adoption. The first resolution is the ballot, is the resolution that places the TOT measure on the ballot, and if you go to the bottom of page three of the staff report, there is a question, which is the actual question that will go on the ballot for the voters to read and then vote yes or no. It's at the bottom of page three of the staff report. Um, the council has the ability tonight to amend this question if you would like, as long as it complies with all the legal requirements, but this is the question that's being proposed by staff. It states, "Shall the measure imposing a 1% special transient occupancy tax paid by hotel guests with 65% of revenues to be used for Lompoc police purposes and 35% of revenues to be used for Lompoc fire protection purposes, and permitting hotel operators to retain 2% of all collected transient occupancy taxes to cover collection costs, which will raise approximately $180,000 annually in transient occupancy tax revenues until ended by the voters, be adopted?" And, uh, that, uh, is in the first resolution that's before you tonight. The resolution also, a request that the county consolidate this election with the statewide general election and the city municipal election that's being held on November 8th, uh, so that the county would conduct the election for us. The cost of having the county conduct that election for us is $10,000 over what the cost of just doing our regular council election, uh, will be on November 8th. The second resolution before you tonight is directing the city attorney to draft an impartial analysis of the ballot measure, which is a requirement under the law. If you're going to put this on the ballot, you have to direct the city attorney to prepare the impartial analysis, and then that impartial analysis, which is essentially a summary of the ballot measure, gets printed in the, uh, the voter pamphlet book that gets mailed to all the voters. That second resolution also has a decision for the council to make about the arguments for the measure and the arguments against the measure that can be placed into the voter pamphlet guide. The council has to allow arguments for and against to be submitted, but the council can decide if you would like to write the argument in favor, or opposed, but usually in favor, of the ballot measure that's going to go into the voter pamphlet. If you would like to do that, um, then you have the option of designating one or two council members to prepare that argument, and you will then submit it to the city clerk, um, by the statutory deadline, which it looks like here is August 4th. Or you could decide that you're not going to designate any council member to draft a ballot argument, and you will then just leave it up to whoever submits ballot arguments from the public. It could be any member of the public that submits them, or it could be any council member, and if any council member submits an argument, they do get priority. If more than one council member submits an argument, then the city clerk has to use a random method of selection to decide which council member's argument will get printed in the voter, uh, pamphlet. The third resolution before you tonight is the resolution about rebuttals, and that is an optional resolution. You do not need to allow for rebuttals. Um, in the past couple measures that you put on the ballot, uh, the council chose not to allow for rebuttals, and that just allows, if there is an argument in favor, it allows someone to submit a response to the argument in favor, and if there's an argument opposed, it allows someone to submit a argument, uh, a response to the argument opposed. Uh, the last resolution is just a budgeting resolution for the council to appropriate the $10,000 that would be needed to add this measure to the ballot and conduct the election, or to have the county conduct the election. And that is the staff report. If you have questions, I'm available.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I, I'm gonna take the long way on this question, Jeff. There's something about, that just strikes me with allowing this 2% to cover collection costs. I understand it. What I want to do is make sure that we're equitable across the board with this. Now, TOT is, I'm gonna consider kind of a special tax. Um, the use of this TOT funding is a special tax. Is there anybody else out there that we collect money from that this 2% would apply to them, or is this gonna be only unique to the TOT? Does that question make sense?
It makes sense. I think maybe an example of what you're talking about, um, is sales tax. Do, because the...
It's all gonna be based on a transaction, but I know hotels, they collect the money. They pay TOT tax. Everybody else in town collects sales tax. They don't get the break, but then sales tax is not paid directly to the city.
That's right.
Are we forgetting anybody that would benefit from the same 2% on payment of tax?
I'm gonna ask if our finance or if our city manager has an answer to that, because they're more expert in the various different types of taxes.
So I'm racking my brain to think of any possible people we might be leaving out or businesses we might be leaving out. Um, and as, as our city manager mentioned, if at some point cannabis businesses were to start paying with credit cards, that would be the only time that I would, the only exception that I would see potentially extending or having an overlap. At this time, we don't really see that. I, I...
Well, we, let me ask you, that's a good point. So if we are collecting a special 1% sales tax from the cannabis industry...
Excise, yeah.
And they're collecting on a credit card, would they be able to, but their tax, is that a special tax? Yes?
It's a special, it's, it's a, it's a special excise tax, by understanding.
Right, so it would fall under...
Well, it wouldn't fall under this particular, it may fall under the philosophy of it, but...
Because it is a special tax to the cannabis industry, then they would be eligible for the 2% on credit card sales.
The cannabis one that comes to the city is a general tax. The excise tax goes, the, the cannabis money that comes to the city is a general tax. The excise tax goes to the state. No, it's okay.
So the 1% that we passed, I want to be real clear on this, I, I guess. You know, if we're gonna make a special exemption, I want to make sure that it's, so we've charged, we're charging the extra, what, what is the, the retail? Wasn't it a 6% tax or something?
Yes, that's correct.
So if customers are paying with a credit card, wouldn't the retail cannabis people be eligible for the 2% exemption also?
Well, not the way this is written, I don't believe. I would extend that to Mr....
Not at this measure, please.
But in, in theory, could they come and ask?
100,000-foot overlook on this. I, I mean, fair is fair here.
You, you bring up a, a legitimate point. Um, that would be something that we would have to, have to bring back and, and discuss.
Yeah, I mean, I, just saying, I think that, you know, if we're going to do it for one group, and I mean, there may be others out there other than cannabis. I, I don't know. That's kind of one of the thought processes here, though. This is very unusual that you exempt somebody for credit card processing, and then we have others that could be exempt. So I know we need to move forward on this to put it on a ballot, but I'm wondering if we should do a follow-up on this with these, the 1%, the 6%, et cetera, to see what we can do. Is this, am I, am I talking sense here, Jeff?
You are making sense, and I'm trying to, trying to think of what the distinction is between the TOT tax and the 6% tax that's on dispensaries. And I think that one distinction is the TOT tax is paid by the hotel guests, and the hotel is just holding the money for the city, whereas the, the dispensary 6% tax is a 6% tax on all the gross revenues that the dispensary collected, not on, I was gonna say not on each individual transaction, but it is, it kind of essentially is on each individual transaction.
Right, and it's no different if you're a local staying in a hotel or whatever here. It's, I don't know, I just have this feeling, and...
I understand the concept that you bring up is fairness among our different taxes, and we're giving a 2% credit to the hoteliers that collect tax for us. Why not 6%?
Yeah, why wouldn't other, you know, cannabis happens to be the one that has the special taxes that we're all thinking of, and who knows what else we have out there, you know, but...
I, I don't believe that there are a lot of situations where there would be overlap. The cannabis may be one, and that would be something that we could bring back and look at if we want to extend the same type for the sake of fairness, um, but it would take some evaluation. We would need to look and see what are the differences between the two different types of taxes and the, and the situations with the customer base. Are, are, are they collecting with credit cards? And that would be the, the other piece, is that we, we know from the, um, the May meeting when, um, we had many guests here to discuss the, the TOT measure, that the majority of those are being paid by credit cards, whereas I, I don't know what the percentage of cannabis sales are paid by credit card.
Yeah, I mean, that would be irrelevant.
Well, the way it's written here is that, that 100, or 2% of the TOT that's collected is eligible for the rebate, so I, I...
Just so if you went into a, a cannabis dispensary and you pay with a credit card, a debit card, or cash or check, it's the same as going into a hotel and paying with credit card, debit, cash, or check, and they're getting the 2% break on cash. And I, I don't know if there's anything else out in the wings here, but I, I mean, I think it does bear further looking into because I, just...
Oh, that, it's, it's a good point, and I think that we should, we should bring that back and look at it for fairness' sake.
You know, would I have to make a council request to bring this back, or is this something that staff would do a follow-up on? Because, I mean, it's not on the agenda. It's, this is not the item we're talking about here now, but I think we should discuss this later on, so how would the process work? Thank you.
Councilmember Vega?
Great point. I've been kind of wrestling with this myself. Are, are we down to the wire now for a decision tonight to put this on the ballot, or is there any more time left?
I don't believe so. I think we, I think the county's deadline was June 30th, so we have the June 21st meeting.
So we have one more meeting, possibly. I guess the question I have is, and actually, I was an advocate for the discount. Uh, I'm just wondering if the discount is gonna be discriminatory in a certain way or allow precedence, okay? That's why I'm asking this question, uh, to the council, so that we, we think about this, that what I was using was the math during one of the hotel operator's, uh, presentation as far as 60, 65, and 35, as far as toward police and fire. And their math didn't include a discount, so what I was trying to do is, we were trying to incorporate and help everyone, um, make everyone happy, I guess, so to speak. We get the, the extra TOT directed to the public safety, but the same token, we have a ballot measure that needs a 2/3 vote, uh, to pass, so you know, it seems like, is it gonna pass with that discount to the hotel operators? Or would it have, uh, would it be easier to pass without that discount? I guess for people that actually might do their homework here and, and read the ballot measure. So that's one of my questions that I have here to ask, do we want to continue with that discount, or do we want to just cap it at the original 1% that was requested? Uh, what it means is police would get less than 65%, and fire would get less than 35% if it was kept at 1% without a discount. So I guess that's kind of my question to the council. We've already kind of come to this point where we, we kind of, uh, agreed on allowing a discount, uh, but it is another question I'd like to present and ask these guys one more time. Is that what we really want to do? Because we could be setting a precedence in the future. Whether or not it's TOT or not, there's not many people that get a discount for using their, their credit card.
Councilmember Ball?
So I don't know if this is helpful. I hope the city wouldn't spend hours and hours and hours and find this maybe a simple answer. And correct me if I'm wrong, if someone thinks something else makes sense, but from my understanding, the conversation we were told from the hoteliers, that the majority of people staying in a hotel use a credit card. Makes sense. They get charged a fee, I understand that. When it comes to cannabis industry, uh, you might just ask some of the owners in town, how many people actually pay for cannabis product with a credit card? And I'd almost, uh, I almost put money on it that almost no one uses a credit card in cannabis, and that is because of federal regulations and banking issues. So in that context, this is apples and oranges to me in that sense, and just in one of the comment, when it comes to the TOT tax, it, we're specifically talking about a tax and the structure of that tax that was created specifically for the hotel. So if we wanted to carve out and make a tax for cannabis, we would have specific details as we have, that is very specific to the cannabis industry, and this for the hotel industry is very specific for the hotel industry. So to me, I don't, I don't see much crossover here, um, and I'd personally be willing to stand with what I voted with originally on this one.
Any other questions or concerns before we go to public comment, and then we'll come back and discuss each of the items? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the floor for public comment on item number 12. If you'd like to call in, the number to call is 805-875-8201. If you would like to speak and you're in the room, you're more than welcome to come And, you know, it's a risk I take every time I go quiet. All right, seeing no one rise and no one call in, we'll close public comment on this, and we'll bring it back. So, um, the first question I heard was whether or not we should leave in the 2% or not. So, um, any requests to change that? Councilmember Vega?
You know, I will, I will put in a request, at least a request, to change that and take out the discount. Uh, one of the reasons is, um, the, there was no oversight of that 2% and whatever the charges are, okay? Uh, what they have is they have TOT, and they pace, pay based on their sales, but when I asked the question last time about, uh, the 2%, I mean, they can take up to 2% of the discount, but they don't have to provide any proof that it was 2%.
I believe they actually do have to report their collection, and then the assumption is their fees are anywhere from 3% to 4%, and we're allowing a 2% deduction of that process, but they do report out their TOT fee.
Right, they're, they're, we don't have the mechanism in place at this point, but the intention would be absolutely to, um, require a reporting of what the fees were and what the, the discount is, and at any time, just like with any of our other taxes, it is subject to audit if we decide that we need to audit those.
Okay.
But the, but the discount will be 2% regardless of any evidence that's submitted.
And that, that's what I'm bringing up, okay? It's 2% regardless of the cost to the hoteliers, and I get it.
Just for clarification, it might be helpful, us as the city, we pay about 2.25%, so that's where we came up with the 2% as a percentage to... so that's where we came up with the 2 as a percentage to...
Yeah, you know, asking the question, and just to clarify, I'd like at least, pass or fail, like to remake that motion, that we not allow the discount.
Okay.
Just because it keeps it cleaner, and when you think about the precedence and you think about lack of oversight, you heard the response there that we don't have the mechanism in place, it wasn't. It was exactly as I heard it last time, that there's no oversight.
Well, there is, it's just an audit, and it's random, so it's not an ongoing. All right, so we have a proposal on the floor to remove the 2% collection from this. Is there a second for that?
I tell you, this is part of the quondrum I'm having with this whole thing, is it's, I'd love to be able to say I second this, but on the other hand, I see where we had already basically negotiated this. There's many angles, I think, and I hate to say no to a second on it, but I'm gonna just say that I'm gonna go ahead and retain myself with this recommendation.
Okay, any other... All right, that request fails. Thank you for making the request. So any other changes to the language before we move on to the language of the ballot question? Councilmember Starbuck?
I would like to make one point, though. Regardless of not getting a second or not, the hoteliers did request over a 1% with the discount, okay, just to make that clear. You're not making anybody happy there, you know, so, just to clarify that.
Okay. So seeing no requests for any other changes to the language, we'll move on from the language to item 4B, that requests of potentially having a author for argument, and up to two council members. Would we like to write our own argument for, or would we like to leave that open for someone else to write? Councilmember Ball.
I think we should write it.
All right, was that a volunteer?
Yes, if necessary.
All right, so I have a volunteer. Do I have anybody else who would like to work on the argument for this? We're allowed up to two. So are we good with just one, or would you like support?
Well, if somebody from the city can help me a little bit, I'm happy to put in whatever it takes.
I'm sure staff can review it to make sure it meets the appropriate language.
Actually, staff cannot participate in supporting or opposing this measure, so, because, well, we can't use public funds to do that.
You can't use public funds to do that. All right, I will volunteer and support you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we need to have a vote on...
On that, exactly. So we have a motion to write the argument, and that Councilmember Ball and Mayor Osborne will do that. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All right, let's take a vote on that. And that passes 401. The next question is 4C. Do we want to allow a rebuttal? Councilmember Ball.
If our, I think I understood precedent was that we usually hadn't in the past, or...
That's right.
So I would keep tradition alive.
All right. Second, so we have a motion and a second not to allow. All right, and that passes 401. And then we have a requirement for our city attorney to read the ordinance in if we're going to place the measure on the ballot, so I'm guessing we should take a vote on placing the measure on the ballot first, and if that passes, then you'll read it in?
Yes, you can vote to adopt all the resolutions, then I'll read the title.
All right, so I will move that we adopt all the resolutions. I need a second.
I'll second you.
All right, and any questions?
I do have a question.
Councilmember Vega.
If we're gonna move forward with the discount as, as we previously voted, I'd like to make sure the city does do a little oversight on the collection, okay? As Christie stated, there's no mechanism there, so it wasn't mentioned, so I'm not sure exactly what that is going to be, and only, only because, you know, we should have oversight on what we have. Yes, we know what the TOT is, I'm talking about, yes, and we've already voted to give them 2% regardless, so we pay 2.25, I get it. So we're giving them, I guess you guys figure it's, it's cheap, but we still should get the paperwork on that, even though the mechanism isn't there.
Absolutely, and to be, to clarify, the reason the mechanism isn't there is because we haven't implemented this, it hasn't gone to vote yet. And so we will implement a mechanism as soon as it, or if it passes, and then we will have that in place.
Yeah, thank you, I'm okay with that, thank you.
All right, there is a motion and a second to accept all of the resolutions. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's vote. That passes 401, and city attorney, take it away.
The title of the ordinance that will go on the ballot is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lompoc amending Chapter 3.12 entitled transient occupancy tax of Title III of the Lompoc Municipal Code to impose a 1% special transient occupancy tax for police and fire purposes, and to allow a collection discount for hotel operators to recover tax collection costs. And we need one final motion to waive further reading of that ordinance.
Councilmember Ball.
I'll make a motion.
So moved, and a second?
I'll give a second if I can ask a question.
Absolutely.
Okay, so this thing is binding on current hotel owners, and this is going to be for every hotel owner, regardless of change of ownership, regardless of someone building a new hotel here. We're making this a blanket ordinance for everyone that pays TOT, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Ball, and a second by Councilmember Vega, to waive all future readings. Any other questions? Councilmember Ball. All right, just wanted to make sure, your light was on. Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 401. Thank you all. We'll wait to make your council requests during regular comments, Councilmember Starbuck? Okay. Councilmember Cordova, you are welcome to come back. All righty, we will come back to our agenda now that Councilmember Cordova has joined us. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communications?
No ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. It is your chance for final oral communications for the evening. You may call in at 805-875-8201. If you're in the room, you may come forward to the podium. You have two minutes maximum. If you would like to speak on any city-related matter, either discussed this evening in the past, or that we should discuss in the future. Seeing no one rise and no one call in, we will close oral communications and bring it back to council for comments, meeting reports, and requests. Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cordova.
So I would like to ask the council's support, and before I do, can I just clarify with the city attorney, is it okay to ask the council's support to immediately reinstate commissions, or the utilities commission meetings based on the fact that it is in our handbook as a monthly, it is stipulated?
No, because that's a decision, and it can, probably could result in discussion by the city council, so that's something that should be put on the agenda.
Okay, follow-up question to that, but the council never voted to not have these meetings, and we're going on almost two years since the last meeting. So somebody made the decision to stop these meetings.
I agree, so I think if you wanna talk and have a discussion with staff about why that happened, then it should be an agenda item to discuss that with staff.
Okay, so then in that case, my council request would be that staff bring back a report to council as to, with a valid reason as to why the utilities commission meetings were stopped, why we can't, or we have not been able to reinstate them, and with a, an immediate plan to reinstate the meetings at that time. If I could get council request on that.
A second.
Third.
All right.
And that would be it.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck.
Okay, well, first thing, I'd like to thank American Legion Post 211 for the Memorial Day ceremony, finally, good to have one, have it going back on again. Second is my council request that we just discussed, I don't know if Councilmember Cordova was able to hear anything inside about it or not. Concerning collection of taxes, waiving fees and all that, basically, I think it should be an overview, not specific to cannabis industry, as Mr. Ball was trying to argue earlier. This would be across the board in case something is under the mat here. We're gonna do it for one industry. We have special tax, we have special tax, there may be other taxes or revenue streams. I think in the order of doing good business, and in the order of fairness, that this should be something that staff does some research and brings back. I don't know how long it would take, I don't know when to put a deadline on it, but I think it's really worth us to pursue and make sure that our closet is clear.
I need a second and a third.
Could you repeat that?
I wish you would've listened. Well, basically, without going back into this in a full thing, we are giving the hoteliers a 2% on a special tax, TOT is special, and we're going to increase, and we're going to have special use on this, and we're exempting 2%. We have a special tax on cannabis retail, 6%. Are they getting the same type of exemption on this? We have distribution at 1%, are they getting the same treatment as the hoteliers? This would also go on and include, we don't know if there's anything else that this would apply to. We've segregated one group, the hoteliers, we've given them this, but now it's basically, is there anybody else that would be left out on a benefit for this?
While you were out of the room, Councilmember Starbuck brought up this point about potential fairness issues, and if we're gonna be giving a 2% credit to the hotel operators, what other taxes do we have in the city that maybe should have a collection credit as well? And so he wants to have a report back from staff about that.
Councilmember Ball.
So I keep hearing that, I just need clarity, I keep hearing the phrase "special tax." From what I understand, cannabis tax is general tax, is that correct? So am I wrong?
No, cannabis tax is a general tax, but whether it's special or general, this fairness issue, I think, still is a question that we can bring back a report on.
So in this report, is that gonna include sales tax in general, too, then?
I think it needs to, yes.
Okay, interesting.
Or just to explain why or why not a credit might be applicable or appropriate for sales tax, cannabis tax, any, all of the taxes.
Councilmember Cordova.
For clarification, am I understanding correctly that the credit is for the processing of credit card transactions? So there shouldn't be a discussion about the tax itself? That if I'm understanding you correctly, then it's the request of fairness to say that if the hotel industry is eligible for a refund for their processing of credit cards, then we should look to other industries as to whether they're eligible for, for processing, but not to discuss tax, because I won't agree to that.
Well, all the other industries that are taxed by...
So you're correct, it wouldn't be to discuss the tax, it would be to discuss whether or not they qualify or should qualify for a processing fee reimbursement.
Out of curiosity, because it's gonna be a moving target, is this tax gonna be applied to, how should I say this? Just had my train of thought, I totally, totally lost it.
So the look I'm getting from the city attorney is that this has become a discussion, so if you have questions and would like to hear, maybe we should agree on this and have it come back.
That's a lot from a look, but yes.
You're really good at them.
So I guess my, my question is, for clarity, because we're talking about a processing fee, for you guys to give us accurate information for us to make any sort of decision, the information is going to have to include some sort of estimate on the percentage of transactions that are actually credit card-based. So if you're gonna come back with a bunch of stuff, and we don't have that number, that's, it's not, that's not gonna be a balanced conversation. So if you're gonna bring that back, that's something I'd love to see as well.
If I could, for clarity? I mean, we have four taxes that we do, TOT, sales tax, property tax, and cannabis tax. I'm not sure how we're gonna be able to decipher if anybody paid their property tax with a credit card. I don't know, or am I missing the point?
Because we don't collect it, all we do is receive our portion, because we don't collect it.
It's a pass-through, like sales taxes is a pass-through.
And I think that comes back as a part of the report, that it's difficult to provide that information, because sales and property tax are not collected by us, they're collected by the state and, or the county, and then passed on to us, and so that could potentially be where we don't have that control.
I just wanna get clarity, okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so is that Councilmember Ball and Cordova supporting the report?
Sure, I'm curious.
Oh, no, I wasn't supporting, I was getting clarification, because...
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll give you a third. All right, anything else? Councilmember Starbuck?
No, that's it, thank you.
You opened up that can of worms. All right, Councilmember Ball.
I'm gonna do a little role reversal with Councilmember Starbuck, I have nothing to
All right, so I attended the Santa Barbara County Area Government several meetings this past month, and already this month. I wanna also thank the organization for putting on the Memorial Day event, was able to attend that. Future had its second graduation of youth go through their service academy, and that happened last Monday, and it was really awesome to see these young people feel more confident about their skills and be ready to go out and get jobs in our community, and I wanna thank that group. They are looking, Future is looking for mentors, you can contact them via the terlinkconsulting@gmail.com, that's T-E-R-R-A-L-I-N-K consulting at gmail.com, and say you'd like to be a mentor. They're looking for mentors for these young people who are trying to make a difference in their lives. I attended the NCPA meeting in Hillsburg, and the city did cover my costs for that, as well as was invited to speak to the Vandenberg Middle School Leadership Class about local government, and it was really great to hear the young students have great questions about our community, and be really curious about how local government works, and I wanna say thank you for the thank you note that you all sent and signed. The Chamber is seeking nominations for its Man and Woman of the Year, as well as Small Business of the Year, and those are due by 6:30. You can go to lompoke.org to download those applications or purchase a ticket for the annual awards. There's also gonna be a ribbon cutting on the 17th for Savvy Clinic. It is a new free clinic, medical clinic in the community. It is a group of local doctors who have put this clinic together. It is free for those that can't afford medical assistance. It is located at 1111 East Ocean, and there will be a ribbon cutting for it, and I just wanna thank all of those doctors... and there will be a ribbon cutting for it, and I just want to thank all of those doctors for organizing that. It's something that's really in need in this community. Hancock is expanding its degree programs here at the Lompoc Valley Center. This is really exciting. I would encourage anyone and everyone to check out the list of additional programs. I think it will be a total of seven programs that you can get your associate's degree without ever having to go to Santa Maria, so we really want to thank Hancock for expanding that program. And the city itself has several summer programs going on. There's the library program called Garden to Kitchen for June and July. Swim instructor training is available for June thirteenth and fourteenth. The volunteer program is scheduled for June thirteenth through the fifteenth. The library's summer reading programs begun as of June first. There is the Spud Baseball Camp, which will be the thirteenth through the sixteenth of this month. And then the Kids Plant Camp was just announced, so all of those are listed on our city website. If you've got kids or yourself interested in any of these opportunities, please don't hesitate to check them out. And the life cycle, the AIDS Life Cycle Ride is coming through town. It will be here on Thursday. The, Thursday is their shortest day. They are in Lompoke most of the day. They will be out in our community, so welcome them to our restaurants and our shopping and our hotels. They will also then ride out early on Friday morning, so if you head south and commute, be aware that we will have a great deal of cyclists on the road, so be very careful. But we welcome them to the community, and we're excited to see the ride come back through after two years. I will be over at Riverbend Park around one o'clock to welcome them and share discount packages and maps of the community, so if you'd like to come over and hand them out with me, I'd love the company. With that, we will adjourn this meeting to the next Lompoke City Council meeting at six thirty PM on June twenty-first at twenty twenty, on, of twenty twenty-two. Thank you.